Good conversation.
Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, December 14. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kluck.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Eiler.
Here.
All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special presentations to make this morning, so we will move to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's an issue that anyone wants to speak to that is not later going to be considered on the agenda or agenda review, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Mr. Raby.
Good morning, Tom Raby, 17513 West 113th Street in Olathe. Two weeks ago, four of the board members here voted not to renew county manager's contract, and that took most of us by surprise. And that was, and there was very little explanation or information other than some rhetoric that has come out. And then a week ago, a large number of employees, more people came here last week than came when this board, none of you guys, tried to close up the county nursing home. And they actually brought people from nursing home in here in Cots and to address the board. But that was quite a crowded day. But last week were more people on this third floor of the building than I've ever seen. And I have to say, I commend the county employees who spoke behalf of their manager. I have never heard that many employees in an organization speak in support of their And one of the bottom lines that several of them said was through the rough times of the last decade, they had been asked to do more with less, and they seemed to have been very happy to do it based on leadership. Then some public folks, non-county employees, spoke, and some of them got into the veiled political accusation for that part of it and started to make, by God, threats about your future if you voted for this situation. And I don't want to see us get into that. You folks are not supposed to belong to a political party. I mean, you could belong to a political party, but you're not supposed to use that political party to get you on this board commissioners or in your decision-making on this board commissioners. This is an apolitical entity, and I applaud that when it works. I think that's a great way to go. We don't need name-calling and puppet string pulling from some party master someplace telling any of you guys what to do. Your responses to the voters of Johnson County and the citizens who can't vote for whatever reason. Now, I'll get into a little bit of history. You know, I've been coming here for a long time. I about lasted all of the board members, and at least one county manager and everybody on that dais except for Mr. Jarrett, he's been here, he's a fixture, and Linda Barnes, who is not here today. But, so I've seen a lot of things come and go. But one of the things I remember is when you make a decision, there's a good process, there's actually a schematic for decision-making that can be used. First of all, you define a situation, and then you say, is there a problem? And if there is no problem, then there's no decision to be made unless there is a potential problem. Well, the potential problem needs to be pretty clearly defined. None of this has been at least shared with the public, whatever the decision-making process led to, I'm not privy to, most of the voters and county employees are not privy to, and I've made some cynical remarks that if you've got some magician with a magic wand who walks on water, ready to come in here and become county manager, we need to know about that. Or if you're just going to try to sell us some guy who has some connection someplace, we need to know about that, too. So I think this was maybe not totally uncalled for, but I think it was, the public information has been sorely lacking, very sorely lacking. And I could tell by the three members who voted to retain the county manager that they were not happy with this vote, and I wasn't happy with this. I don't believe in trying to throw the rudder over and heel the ship over 35 degrees and try to make a real quick course change. I don't think that new vision and new direction is specific enough information for me to support that kind of thing.
Mr. Raby.
So my time is up, and I thank you for listening, and thank.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else?
Good morning, board members. My name is Calvin Hayden. I live at 14453 Edgerton Road in Gardner, Kansas, and I'm your sheriff. And sometimes, as my duty is of sheriff, I'm a peacekeeper, and that's why I'm here today. Last week has been interesting. Commissioner Brown has been out here in rural Johnson County. We've got a little road problem. And we've had, some of my officers have been out and been with Larry Stricker and Dennis Crownover and several other of the Stricker clan who are longtime friends of mine. They've known me since I was a kid. And I got called out there because we had some officers doing a civil standby. So yesterday, I ended up about 11 o'clock sitting on a tailgate in a pickup in the middle of a field talking about this road. And Brian Peating is director of Public Works. He's frustrated. These gentlemen are frustrated. And I understand both sides of this, and I'm not here to throw stones at either side of this. But as we got to talking, these guys were out here looking at these guys doing the road work, and they have copies of the way that this road is supposed to be built. And they've also got the plans. And in 2015, as part of contacting the stakeholders, they were provided a copy of plans of the way this road was projected to be built. In 2017, they started building the road, and it didn't look a lot like the plans were supposed to be built. So they obtained these plans. Still doesn't look like these plans were supposed to be built. They've got some issues with the way the road bed was prepared, and it doesn't comply with this. So what's happened is, they're not happy. Public Works isn't happy because these guys have been out trying to get the inspectors to do what they're supposed to be doing, right or wrong. And I told them, as I sat and talked to them, I said, you're talking to the wrong guys. These guys are trying to do a job out on the job site, just as if you're out on your property, and they're trying to ply your field, us sitting here criticizing you how to ply your field. They need to talk to the guys that actually pull the strings. That's you. And as far as I can tell right now, there's three countywide elected officials in this county. One's Ed Iert, the other one's me, and the last one's Steve Howe, and I really don't want him involved in this at all. So I'm here to let these guys, I understand, these guys have got legitimate concerns. I've looked at, I'm not a road builder. I understand that there hasn't been enough stakeholder input from both sides of this thing. I think our staff is frustrated, these gentlemen are frustrated, and all of them have the same goal in mind. They want to make sure that we, as stewards of taxpayer dollars, are spent in a good way. And this is just one of those situations where these guys are farmers, and Larry is probably one of the best farmers I've ever met, and probably one of the best in the county. He can get more pounds per bushel or more bushels per acre than anybody I know because he does it right, and he expects us to do it right. And right now, it's off-season, and he's making sure we're going to do it right. And he's got nothing better to do than make sure we're going to do it right, and that's what he wants done. So my concern here is there are several things. You know, in talking about the way we want to do things as a county, we want to make sure that when we make decisions, and I expect this of my people, if they make decisions, I haven't empowered them to make decisions, but I want them to make those decisions as if I'm standing behind them. And I think that's what we need to do. I think we all need to make a decision. Problem we've got is we've got a contractor that doesn't see things that way. You know, they're from Heston, Kansas. They come in, and they don't understand a high-performance organization and all the things we're trying to do here, and they're just trying to get a job done. So you're going to hear some things that you're not going to like, that I've got some concerns with. One of them is, you know, if we do a zoning action out in the county, everybody within 1,000 feet has to be notified. But yet, if we replace a bridge or do some road work, we don't have to notify anybody. I think we need to do a better job with our stakeholders. I think they need to have a say-so in this and at least contact them and let them know what's going on. And they don't have to do that in the cities. I get that, but they don't have the issues. As an example, Larry has semi tractor trailers full of grain, and during harvest, he's immune, and I know this, from any weight limits. So he's got basically a heavy lift vehicle going down his road, and it will sink as deep as you want to. I mean, you guys know what the issue is during a moat. We had to build very heavy lift roads to very high specs. Well, he's just trying to get out of his driveway with it, and you should see his drive. He had to really, really reinforce his drive just to get his grain to his barn. So those are big issues, and you're going to hear about those issues this morning. These are good guys. I don't know that I agree with all their efforts, but listen to them. They really know what they're talking about in a lot of ways, and I think there's things we can do better here if we listen to each other and value our stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Someone else?
Morning. Larry Stricker. 18150 Cedar Niles Road, Gardner, Kansas. I get a little nervous, so just bear with me. They come out and got an easement for me. Pat Cooper brought the set of plans out. They showed no cuts, and he said, on the grader ditch on my side, they're going to raise the road bed up approximately 15 inches. That was fine. He said, now, we're not going to cut your grader ditch down. The ground's going to be basically flat, as it is in these pictures I would like to show you now. These pictures were taken last summer before this started. The grader ditch is basically, it just had a little dip, and they said they would not hardly change this channel any because they were going to raise the road up. Now, you bury this room in the grader ditch next to my property, next to a cornfield, it's going to sit like this. If any of you know anything about water and dirt, it's going to run downhill. But Pat Cooper assured me that you'll be no big cuts. Next, when they started this, they started moving the black dirt. They pushed the grass up the hill because they can't use grass for fill, but they used black dirt. I don't know if you ever built anything, but you don't use black dirt for base. And I asked the little girls, Inspector Mindy, she worked for Pfeffercorn, I think that's the county inspector for the county, she said it'd be all right because they're going to sheet foot it. Okay, that's fine. Just make sure you get compaction. She said, we will. We'll guarantee compaction. And it all went fine. They pushed the dirt up past the easement, so we knocked it down so the respect would make a little burma on our side to keep the water from washing down into the new grader ditch. That didn't sell well, and they thought we were stealing their dirt. I didn't steal their dirt because it's all on my side, and it's waste disc grass. They pushed it up out of the way. They called the sheriff on us. They had three officers there within three minutes. I don't know where they come from. We're out in the country, buddy. If you had an emergency, you wouldn't get them there any quicker. I appreciate that. Anyways, they showed up, the county inspector and the people doing the dirt work, they looked at the plans and said, oh, they're on our side of the easement. I beg to differ. I read the plans. They got 95, or about 100-foot temporary easement down by the basin where they put the culvert. It runs past the prominent easement, and it's 100-foot wide, 18-foot capacity. They showed them on the map on this set of prints. It's only 100-foot wide. It does not run the entire length of the project. These are the people inspecting it. These are the people that are building the road. Next, they've taken this black dirt and making a road bed. They've raised it up about this much. It was probably this much at the beginning. They rolled the sheet foot over. You know, this is how they're going to compact it. Then they took the sheet, they got a little five-dozer blade. They pushed the dirt to the south. They started north, pushed south. Me and my friend, my contractor, Dennis Crownover, we watched them. They don't like us watching because I've been in the business, Dennis has been in the business, retired from the union, 101, knew a little bit about dirt. They pushed the dirt. It's not compacted no more. And they quit because it was cold last, went Thursday and Friday, got down to below the freezing. You can't do direct much dirt when it's froze. They come back Monday, and they said, we're going to rock and rock the road Tuesday morning. So they had their sheet foot there, and they kind of dulled it up. By the way, we're going to have some specification on the sheet foot here in a little bit. Anyways, they get to the, comes Tuesday morning, they got dump trucks starting to back in there to fill the AB3 on the road. We're watching. It makes tracks about that deep. That's kind of called a proof roll. I don't know if you know what a proof roll is, but that's, if you've got a proof roll and the truck sinks, it flunks. Right here in this book, it says, it's got the specification for a proof roll. It flunks. It flunks the whole length of the job, the whole length of the job. I have pictures. We'll get them in a minute. But it's not, it didn't meet county specs. Then when they use the back fill along the edge of the road, which has got to be compacted the same as the road bed, they used more grass fill off of my property, grass sod about this thick for the fill along the road edges. They took 20, they got about another 30-some-foot easement. I forget what the easement exact is. They took it all off of my side. Now that we have a 16-foot road-wide bed, road, in Johnson County, why would anybody in this day and age build a 16-foot wide road? This is a road bed of 16 foot. That's not very wide. We have pictures of two cars trying to pass. Calvin Hayden left yesterday. I don't know, but I think if you drive down the middle of the road, Calvin is going to get you in trouble. You drive down the middle of the road, you're going to get a ticket for driving down the middle of the road. Well, Calvin didn't have no choice because it's only 16-foot wide, and if he got off of the shoulder, he's going to fall off. It's 15-foot. You get my point. Anyways, the whole road is not built to specs. The Pfeffercorn's not doing a good job inspecting. The grades are not cut right, and I haul heavy loads, probably 80,000-pound truck loads. My tractors are about 18-foot wide tires. My equipment, I got plenty of good equipment. There's anybody in the county. It does not, you can't, they took no easement off the other side. They don't maintain the roadside, the neighbor guy. Trees grow out in the county. The trees hit machinery. Got to call the county, get them trimmed back. They took no roadside. Now on the left side, where they did run the hard water off of Little Bull, they ran it up against Cedar Niles Road, and it'd be on the east, and on my, on the west side, now we have it cut this deep, this deep, with a six-foot wide bottom. I wish it'd all come out and look at it.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your remarks.
Okay. I appreciate your time, guys. It's been a pleasure. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Hello, folks. I'm Dennis Crownover of 21225 Twin Creek Road, Gardner, Kansas. And I've started working for Hollins when I was 22 years old, and most of those years has been sitting in compaction equipment and/or blades. And I've done, I suppose, thousands of proof rolls on different streets here in Johnson County and surrounding counties. All right, let's get right to the deal here. We did a proof roll on that truck. I brought one of my trucks in with a load of beans on it Monday night. Because in accordance with your county specs here, I'm going to give you a picture here of, out of this book. I can show you out of this book here if you want me to, but that page comes out of this book. And it seems to mention something about a proof roll there. I might just read it for you guys. And like I say, this page comes out of this book. Would you guys like to see this book? Here. Go on down, see whose names in it and all that. Prior to approval of subgrade, proof roll, subgrade with fully loaded tandem axle dump truck, truck, excuse me, rework all soft and spongy areas identified, then proof roll again. That seems like what I've done for most of my life. All right. Now, just in case that doesn't qualify for, they have a lot of refer to standard specifications of State Road and Bridge Construction Edition 1990 in there. I just happened to look that up because I want to see which, probably the last road work I've done for DOT was down here on 175th Road going into Gardner, Kansas off I-35. I cut the subgrade out there for, back then, it was Apec Reno, Reno-Apec. And I went here to this page here on specifications because this Mindy kept saying, if you sheet foot this road, it is good enough. All right. I read the specifications here. When type B compaction is designated, the rollers shall conform to the following requirements. Tampering or sheet foot rollers shall consist of metal rollers, drums, or shells surmounted by metal studs with tampering feet projecting not less than 6 and 1/2 inches. That's the feet that hangs off their roller. There, the roller that's on them. The roller that they've used. I've got a picture of their feet there. It might be, if I was generous, I would give it a 3 and 1/2 inch. I would give it a 3 and 1/2 inch. All right, I've got to hurry up here. I've got several more pictures of this subgrade I would like to show you after my proof roll. I do not know that you have to be really a dirt man to understand that this is not suitable. I do not know what Mr. Pfeffercorn or Mrs. Pfeffercorn or whatever Pfeffercorn knows it. Here's a picture of their compaction. Now, like I say, a sheet's foot's supposed to walk out. When it gets hard, you shouldn't even see a print. They're too soft. And I'm going to leave you with probably one last thing to think about. This'll apply to your house, if you guys ever build a house. If you don't have good subgrade, you're not going to have a good road. Just keep spending money on her. I think I've covered everything I wanted to say. I might just hand out a few more pictures here just so you can think this over. Send it down through there. Heck, I'll tell you what, let's just send them all. That way, that way you can't say I didn't do my end. But I would never, when I was working for Hollins Corporation, I would never try to sell anybody a product this lousy. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone else?
My name's Terry Simpson, 27250 West 215th Street, Spring Hill, Kansas. Also have some pictures, and I'm just like Dennis Crownover, been in this business. I've been retired operators union now for two years, but I did it for 35 years. This road is very unacceptable, very unsafe, and I told one of the gentlemen out in the hallway today, I want to see the fire department come down there after a two or three-inch rain and see where they go. People, it's ridiculous to spend money like this for anything in this county. Commissioner Mike Brown was out there two weeks ago today, spoke with him, and he had mentioned he's a builder developer. I looked at him. I said, Mike, would you accept this for anything to put a building on in your development or put a house on? He says, absolutely not. I said, there you go, right there. I said, how about getting a stop? He said, we can't stop construction. I've been in places where they stop construction. If there's something going on that's not proper. Now somehow, we can get this stopped before it goes any farther, but now they're probably two days from being done. They might be done today. I don't know. They got a seed yet. And also, I have pictures I like to pass around where it went from a 20-foot road to a 16-foot road with an 8-foot drop-off on one side. And I'm going to say it's probably to the east side where the bull creek comes around, and they got this water coming right up against you, right up against you now. And they got 14-to-12-inch riprap there. Sure, that's great for that side, and they got the pipe down here at the bottom of it, but that bull creek is going to back up on Larry Stricker's property right there. There's no getting around it. I mean, the PE on this job really needs to be looked at, see what's going on with this because it's very poor in every aspects. I don't know who does this, but I'm going to pass some pictures around. Original grade, current grade, current width, two pickups sitting side by side. And like Larry said, his equipment is 18-foot wide at the base of the tires. You've got a 16-foot road with a culvert that's straight down right here. Any of you want to come out and move the combine for him? Please do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is William Joyce, and I live 4806 Belinda Court, Westwood, Kansas. And I wanted to, I was able to get the entire decision of the hearing officer for the small claims on this sheet of paper. Anyway, the second statement concerns sale three, which should not be used according to Johnson County Appraiser to Johnson County Appraiser Office Cards in parentheses and Search Index in parentheses. Sale three is a bungalow style and not ranch-style. Also, sale one should not be used because it is on a highly-used four-lane street. It was also under construction at the time of picture. There are around twenty-two ranch-style houses not located on busy streets. There is no problem with sale number two, which has a building cost value of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and a total cost of two hundred thousand. The third statement is only partially correct. It has a sagging roof, our house has a sagging roof that needs repair or new shingle, replacement of windows from salvage yard, repair of sound foundation from buckled and cracked concrete, the correction of the flat front door stoop that results in rain-stained foundation wall and rotted woodwork, electrical and waterline replacement, and other construction costs with an estimate of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. The interior has nineteen fifty-two, the nineteen eighty styling, which needs replacement at about fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand, or over a hundred and eighty thousand total repair. When the county estimates the total value of land and building is about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. It is highly unlikely that a family of four is going to pay a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars for the subject property. The fourth paragraph errors in numerous ways. The county has not complied with the two thousand nine, two thousand ten orders to reduce the values of physical condition, construction quality, and C D U by one step reduction. The county has inspected the property twice, but not in past four years to the taxpayer's knowledge. And the adjustment has been upward by about fifty percent from eighty-three thousand, two hundred and two thousand, and two thousand thirteen to a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred in two thousand seventeen. Matthew Burkey was the photographer, presumably of both inspection. And the hundred and ten pictures of his choosing tell a different story than his memory at
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Anthony Stricker. I'm Larry's son. I'm seventeen years old, and I live at one eight one five zero Cedar Isles Road, Gardner, Kansas. The first thing I'd like to bring up to you is safety on this road. I don't feel safe driving on it. You know, if I have to pass a neighbor, or a car, or a school bus, or a mailman, or my parents, or anybody else on this road, I don't feel safe getting on a shoulder. It, I got a foot between me and the other car passing, and I got an eight-foot drop-off on one side. The shoulders that they compacted is very poor. Somebody could fall off an edge and get hurt. That's, that's my main concern, is safety. I can't build anything that's, you can't have something that's not safe. The problem on our side, there really was no problem on our side. Why are we going to take what zero problem we have and make a large, huge problem out of it? We're just, we built a big, huge ditch, we've narrowed the road, we took a twenty-two-foot wide road and constricted it into a sixteen-foot wide road. Why? That's the question I have for each and every one of you Commissioners, is why would we build a sixteen-foot wide road into a business, a farm, with heavy machinery, large trucks, tractors, high-traffic areas? Why would we constrict that to a sixteen-foot wide road? Okay, think on that one. My next point is that Brian Peating said, and I quote, "If this road fails, he's going to come out and the county will fix the road at county expense." That's what Brian Peating told us. You know, it's, and my, I believe this road has failed. All right? It's unsafe, it's been constricted. Nowhere in the plans did it show huge cuts in the easement that we signed, did it show a cut on our property. It did not, all it said was the roadbed is going to be raised fifteen inches. It did not mention a huge greater ditch being cut. It's just going to take the ditch that is originally there and just taper it off like it should be. No big deal. That's what we signed off on, that's what the agreement was. It has no longer turned into that. It has turned into a large ditch that is now unsafe. The roadbed has failed, not passed, it has failed. Every test that we've performed, I've looked up the KDOT specifications, I've looked in the job rulebook, the specifics for this job, and it's failed the test. We took the semi truck and we did our proof roll, it failed the test for the road, it failed the test for the subgrade, the dirt, the gravel, everything. If you guys can't follow the rules, then why do we have to? You know, why have a rulebook if we can't follow a rulebook? The gravel removed from one hundred and eighty-third, because they redid the bridge on one hundred and eighty-third neighboring Cedar Isles right there. They took the gravel off and they gave it to a neighbor, that's great. But instead, instead of using it to build the roadbed, they used black dirt. Black dirt does not compact like, like existing gravel or something hard that, that's going to compact, that's going to make a solid road base. You can't have a solid road base with dirt if you're going to sheep-foot it with the sheep-foot, it does not pass KDOT specifications, guys. It's unsafe. How am I supposed to turn a semi from a twenty-two-foot wide road into a sixteen-foot wide road with an eight-foot ditch on one side? You will not be able to swing wide enough to make this turn. You will end up in a ditch, you will roll a semi, you will get hurt, you will get somebody else hurt. Guys, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Jerry Stricker. Most of you know me as Strickers Auction. I live at two nine nine three five, West one hundred and fifty-fourth Street in Gardner, Kansas. I was out there yesterday watching them, and they're building this shoulder, and they're taking, taking grass, they're cutting sod in the grass, sod this deep, and they're trying to compact that. One of my pictures was my pickup. I've got almost over, I'm almost squashed off in, and this is supposed to be finished. You know, and these guys have come into a semi, that corner, you can hardly get a corner, a semi around that corner now. And if you squeeze that down to fifteen feet, there ain't no way you're going to get a semi turned in there. This is supposed to been, this is where NASCAR was going to be. If somebody dropped the ball, we would have had NASCAR. This was the main place for NASCAR to start with. They dropped the ball. Anyhow, this, this is commercial property back here. What would you make a fifteen-foot road into a farm that's got all these tractors and trucks? When Larry built these barns, they called that a boulevard. He had to have his building, because this would come into a boulevard. Now we squeeze it down to a path. So, you know, all I can say is, it's not going to work. So you might as well get your bullders out there and start straightening this up, get the road back like an ordinary road, and go from there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, no one else to be heard. The public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I would just simply say this, I'm told by others who have been around longer than I that the maintenance of gravel roads in the county from time to time raise issues. And as in this particular case, the maintenance of this gravel road obviously has. And so the information as regards to the contract and compliance with the contract obviously will be reviewed and that information presented to the Commission. So, thank you all very much. Mr. Allen?
I'm just going to ask a question as we go through this process. If the specs called for a sixteen-foot wide road and it appears it needs to be at least twenty-two feet, is that issue going to be addressed?
Well, whatever, whatever the contract, I think, I think we need to familiarize ourselves with what the requirements of the contract is. And so that, that should be the next step.
But if the contract called for a sixteen-foot wide road, it appears that's not appropriate. I mean, I was pretty impressed with frankly the young man to address that. That's one of the most impressive things I've seen by a young man. Congratulations. But to me, that's one of the major issues. The road needs to be constructed right, but if we called for a sixteen-foot road in the contract, it doesn't appear it's going to meet the needs of the people in that area.
Can Brian talk? Can you? Brian? Well, I think, I think Mr. Peating has been on site over the last several days. And again, I, I have difficulty, I, I'm not an engineer, no.
I was just curious if Brian knew what the specs were for that road, if they were.
I don't know how many of us on this Commission are engineers. Mr. Brown has experience. But yes, I thought that's what I spoke to, is that Mr. Peating would review the elements of the contract with us. Brian, did you want to say something?
Good morning, Brian Peat Public Works. You know, there was a lot said this morning, so I guess what I would offer is we'll put together a report and share it with the Board and yourselves as to what we see.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving to the next portion of our agenda, I do have one note for the record. The City of DeSoto has appointed Robert Garrett as its representative to serve on the Northwest Consolidated Fire District Board through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. That concludes notes for the record. Will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider reappointing James Donovan and Richard Bocher to the First District Representatives to the Consolidated Fire District Number Two through August twenty-four, two thousand and twenty. Item number two, consider reappointing Ellen Hansen, Community Leader Representative, and Mark Keating, Kansas Department of Corrections Representative, as recommended by the Chairman of the Criminal Justice Advisory Council through October first, two thousand and nineteen. Item number three, invitation for bid, two zero one seven dash zero eight eight. Consider authorizing a contract with the Wilson Group Incorporated for Phase Three Interior Improvements at the New Century Airport Administrative Building for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Item four, consider approving a water supply agreement with the City of Gardner for the sale of water to New Century Air Center. Item five, consider authorizing a contract amendment with Bravo Wellness LLC for administration of the county's wellness strategy for the two thousand and eighteen calendar plan year, increasing the contract value from ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars to an estimated two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Item number six, consider authorizing a contract amendment with Tria Health LLC, which currently administers medication therapy management services to high-risk individuals as a component of the self-funded group pharmacy plan to include a tobacco cessation program, increasing the contract value from a hundred and thirty-eight thousand to an estimated a hundred and ninety-five thousand. Item seven, consider authorizing a contract with Pure Fit Incorporated to provide the administration of the county's fitness program and creation of a network of fitness facilities for county employees and spouses to access under the county's fitness program at an estimated maximum cost of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The initial contract term will be for three years with the option to renew for an additional one-year period. Item number eight, consider allocating a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars of two thousand and eighteen alcohol tax funds as recommended by the Drug and Alcoholism Council of Johnson County, a program of United Community Services of Johnson County in its two thousand and eighteen alcohol tax fund recommendations report. And item number nine, consider allocating one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars of two thousand and eighteen human services funds as recommended by the, by United Community Services of Johnson County in its two thousand and eighteen human services fund recommendations report.
Thank you. Is there any item Commissioner would like to have considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? All right, it's back before the Commission, a motion to be in order, Mr. Osterhaus.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. No further questions. Clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Shaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcroft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ocker, Chairman Iler?
Aye.
Motion carried. Action Agenda item number ten.
Consider authorizing a contract with Pure, I'm sorry.
Renewing property.
Consider renewing property, commercial general and automotive, automobile liability, public officials liability, crime fiduciary liability, data security, excess workers' compensation, sheriff's law enforcement liability, and health department, mental health, and developmental supports professional liability policies for calendar year two thousand and eighteen with the quoting carriers in the amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars with multiple incumbent carriers.
Treasury Financial Management.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Bill Coverland. I'm in Treasury and Financial Management. I'm here to get your approval to go ahead and renew our insurance for two thousand and eighteen. The recommended premium, as Chris said, is one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. That's an eighty-three thousand dollar increase over two thousand and seventeen, which equates to about six percent. We are under the two thousand and eighteen approved budget by more than ten percent with this renewal. We are getting a membership credit from FM Global again this year at approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars. Our excess workers' compensation will be renewed on a two-year program to maintain rates and self-insured retention levels. The only policy that really had a large increase this year was the sheriff's law enforcement liability policy increased about sixteen percent, or thirty-two thousand dollars. With that, outstanding questions?
Okay. Last week at Agenda Review, there were some questions about the limits on liability. Is that right, Mr. Allen? Did you raise those questions?
That's correct, and I had the opportunity to meet with Bill on this. After consulting with him and Don Jarrett, maybe the appropriate action would be is to maybe take a step back and have a committee look and see if those increased limits of liability and the Tort Claim Act in Kansas, if we do choose to raise those limits as appropriate. My understanding is there's a difference in the state of Missouri if we have someone working on the state line or a county vehicle and on the Missouri side, there could potentially be a different limit or exposure over there. But maybe it's best to see the pros and cons, and then if it's appropriate, maybe come back with a recommendation at a future date. That would simply be an endorsement to the existing policies. These would be raising those limits. It's not a so-called umbrella policy. It would just be increasing the limits on the general liability and public official part of it, is my understanding, property coverage.
So we do need to approve this recommendation and pending further review, and I'll leave that in your hands, Mr. Allen. You're the experienced insurance agent on this dais, and so would ask that you get together with staff, review all the elements, and come back with us, with a recommendation. And if in fact we do need to raise limits in the future, we can do that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions? Is there anyone here who would like to address the Commission on this item? All right, it's back before the Commission, a motion is in order, Ms. Osterhaus.
Move to approve the staff recommendation to renew the insurance contracts with the quoting carriers for the two thousand and eighteen calendar year at a maximum cost of one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the item in regards to the insurance coverage as noted. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call a rule.
Commissioner Shaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcroft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Iler?
Aye.
Motion carried. Are there any other items on the action agenda?
No, sir.
Turning to reports and communications, Mr. Zacharias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few items this morning. First of all, two industrial revenue bonds are being proposed by, one by the City of Olathe and one by the City of Edgerton. The Olathe project is in the area of one hundred and fifty-fifth Street and Old Fifty-Six Highway. It's for three hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred and fifty thousand square foot bulk storage facility. It's planned that, there's a plan to have a public hearing on next Tuesday at seven o'clock P M. to issue thirty million dollars in tax-exempt bonds. There's a fifty percent property tax payment associated with that project. The cost-benefit analysis, you have a copy of it, shows a positive return to the county in about year five or year six, because that's good news from that point. City of Edgerton's planning to issue I R Bs as well for a cold The cost-benefit analysis, you have a copy of it, shows a positive return to the county in about year five or year six, that's good news from that point. City of Edgerton's planning to issue IRBs as well for Cold Point Storage Logistics Real Estate LLC, $28 million project, 100% tax abatement for 10 years, however, there's a payment in lieu of taxes, about $36,000. The school district's exempt from that, particularly exemption from 100% property tax abatement, so they'll continue to get their dollars. The cost-benefit analysis is in your packet as well, it shows basically that the county has a slight loss over the 10-year period with the current revenues coming in. No actions required on your part to do anything in these two projects, it's merely for your information. Third item talks about 183rd Street project update, doing well in that construction. I believe that that project is complete, and we've had about 2,500 vehicles per day using that new route, so it kind of shows the efficacy of that particular project as we go forward. The total project costs about $4.6 million, so good work on that. I'm not sure if Brian wants to add anything more to that or not, I'll provide the opportunity for him to expound upon this information in the memorandum.
Good morning, Brian Peating with Public Works. There's some good news with Public Works, so we'll share this one with you. Quick video here to look at, this was a link that we established on 183rd Street between So that's the link between Mission and Knoll and 183rd Street. You might recall, about 10 years ago, Overland Park Annex, that island area that we refer to. 20,000 vehicles will be in that area, they're all gonna be using a lot of that road. 175th Street to the north, you might be familiar with, is an unimproved road that we'll be pulling that traffic from. This project is gonna be a lifesaver for many, many folks over the years, and I really appreciate the funds that the board allocates for these types of improvement. This project was much needed and will be a great benefit to that area, so, thank you.
Well, congratulations. I do recall Commissioner Clicka and I were on-site prior to the building of the road, and there were neighborhood concerns, and I'm assuming those were addressed, but the road needed to be done. Yeah, good job. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Clicka. I have compliment Mr. Peating, and as you, Mr. Chairman, and I both know, we've had to get involved with this process early on with a lot of the neighborhoods, but I really credit Mr. Peating and his communication with the community out there to kind of keep them up to date, what's going on, and the efforts that were being done. And in my mind, safety won out in this project because of a lot of the challenges as been articulated even earlier today. It's been the number-one priority with getting this road out there and taking some pressure off some of the others. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Zacharias, do you know if the Edgerton Cold Point Logistics effort, is that an anhydrous ammonia facility, or is there similar technology there?
I'm not familiar with what technology they use for that cold point storage, I don't know.
Okay. I believe it is anhydrous ammonia, yes.
I've heard that, but I can't, I've not been privy to specific information.
No, as in a tour of the logistics park several months ago, the facility was visited and was explained as to their operation, so...
That is a typical item used in cold storage.
Right.
This facility and a potential expansion would be much larger than the lending logistics...
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. There was another, excuse me, Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry, thank you. I thought you were getting ready to move on. A question for the county manager's office, we received the performers, or whatever they call this, the projections, at some point prior to this meeting, because they're in our packet, and one's dated December 6th and one's dated December 4th. On an ongoing basis, I would like to have the opportunity to see that information before I sit down here and look at it. I have questions and concerns about the perform and how it goes together, and there's no real opportunity other than right now, in this moment, and I've not even had a chance to look through it.
We can probably, cannot send you that stuff when we receive it, it's gonna be a quick email, that'd be no problem.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Was there another item?
There is, just one, with regards to updating motor vehicle office hours. Those office hours will be modified to be 7:30 to 4:00 PM, to allow us to go to do some overtime activities. Those will occur, I guess, beginning on January the 2nd. Amy Meekerberg is here as well, and others may talk about the reasons for that, but anybody that indeed is in the queue in the line at 4:00 will still be accommodated. This allows our staff to not be quite so staying past 5:30, past 6:00 to accommodate those activities, as best I understand, but I'll let Amy kind of opine further on that.
Okay. Any further questions? Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
If you have no questions, I'm happy to leave. Amy Meekerberg, Treasury and Financial Management. As Hana mentioned, we talked about this in July, the board might remember, we talked about our self-service options as well as our office hours, and we believe this change will be minimally disruptive, if at all. It's really about those customers being in the office by 4:00, they can get in the queue at any time throughout the day, and this will help us to ensure that a majority of those transactions are processed within our business hours and allow us to better manage customer volumes, staffing levels, overtime expenses, as well as transaction volumes. Do you have any questions?
All right, questions? All right, Amy, thank you.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, that concludes the manager's report. We'll move on to commission comments. Mr. Shaffer.
At this time, sir.
Mr. Clicka.
At this time.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Allen.
No comments.
Mr. Osterhaus.
So, this weekend, Saturday actually, which is a little odd for NFL games, Chiefs play for their playoffs, I wore red today, so let's go Chiefs this weekend.
Mr. Brown.
None, thank you.
All right, I have one item, just for the record, there will be this evening from 5:00 to 7:00, a past chairman's reception at the Community College sponsored by the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce. I'm assuming that there will be several of us at that event, so just note that for the record. We do have a request for an executive session. Mr. Allen, it is about 10:28, we have Public Building Commission and Agenda Review, why don't we set that at 11:00 AM or 20 minutes?
Thank you. I'd move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at 11:00 AM for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of discussing personal matters of non-elected officials to protect the privacy of employees, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:20 AM or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Shaffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are in recess from our regular business session. We will reconvene following the executive session, and next item will be the Spatial Public Building Commission after we take a short break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
... allowance for the interim county manager to $85 per month, establish a process under which the board may award a retention incentive to the interim county manager in an amount not to exceed $500 per month, and that the board adopt Resolution Number 104-17, setting a car allowance for the interim county manager, all to be effective January 1, 2018, and to continue for the duration of service in the position interim county manager, subject to further action of the board.
Sorry, can I get... Motion has been made and seconded to approve the salary arrangement and car allowance resolution in regards to the interim county manager position affecting Ms. Penny Postok Ferguson. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Shaffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Chairman Ilert.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Allen.
Thank you. I would move that the board approve an additional payment to Hana Zacharias in the amount of $1,500 per month.
Maximum.
Maximum, so, thank you. Maximum of $1,500 per month to be made and applied as directed by Hana for a period not to exceed 18 months or until Hana obtains full-time employment.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the motion as presented. Any further questions or discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Shaffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Ms. Postok Ferguson, we have some documents to sign. I would make one last comment. I have sent out a memo along, in regards to a national search, and there is data available. Ms. Cindy Green has a list of search firms that probably need to be reviewed, and I'm suggesting that we take up that issue at our first meeting in January, which would be January 4th, and make decisions regarding thereto at that time. So, there being nothing else to come before us, so we are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you.